Good evening. Call this January twenty twenty five meeting order. If you'd please stand, and Alex is gonna lead us to the invocation.
Sure. Y'all pray with me. Good Lord, thank you so much for this day. Thank you for this opportunity to gather together in your house and do the people's business. Let every decision made here be in accordance with your will, and let your wisdom and guide us be on us. In this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. You want to send a prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I see Tiffany's here. I don't know who else is out here, but thank you for coming. I need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I make a motion to approve the January fourteen twenty twenty five meeting agenda with the following changes: Add executive session for the purposes of discussing litigation, and in light of the absence of the chairman at this evening's meeting, that we move County Administrator Item One up on the agenda before the community development items.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let it pass. I need approval of the December twenty twenty four meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the December twenty twenty four meeting minutes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Pass. All right, we're gonna move up to the County Administrator.
Item one is the appointment of Commission Vice Chairman. Each year, the Board of Commissioners appoints one of its members as the Vice Chairman. Our recommendation is consider one of y'all as the appointment for Vice Chairman, so.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Dr. Jean Wallace as Vice Chairman for twenty twenty five.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's done.
Don't let it go to you.
Congratulations.
Peaceful transition of power.
Yes. As I told them earlier when I found out this was gonna happen, I think the last meeting with any people that around anything I've been over was the Twelfth Grade Honor Society at Tompkins High School nineteen seventy-four. So, it's been a couple of days. I've instructed the County Administrator and the County Attorney, if I get too far in left field, to reel me back in. But hopefully, we'll be able to keep the wheels on the wagon. That being said, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. I'd also like to say, just in the, for what it's worth category, anyone that would like to speak later on this evening, we do have a time for public comments. If you'll just sign up at the back, it's no big deal. You'll be given five minutes to speak. Long as everybody stays pleasant and happy and polite, you'll be allowed to speak. All right, now, let's move on. I need a motion to close the meeting and open the public hearing for community development.
I'll make a motion to close a meeting and open the public hearing for community development.
Second.
And we're now in a public hearing.
So, item one is conditional use approval for a borrow pit to be located on Oak Level Road. This is actually an expansion of an existing borrow pit use on this property. And you can see the approximate location highlighted there and the existing borrow pit in front of it. Although this is considered an expansion of the conditional use, it is a separate borrow pit from that existing one. This new one will have a site that's approximately seventy-two acres and the borrow pit about thirty acres. The existing pit is ninety-nine percent complete with one remaining project, and once that's completed, that existing pit will go into reclamation. The duration of the new pit is estimated to be three years, operate Monday through Friday from sunrise to sunset, and will use that existing access off of Oak Level, as you can see here. This pit will also be buffered with existing vegetation and fencing. Planning and Zoning Commission, they did recommend approval with conditions as presented. I won't read through them again for you, but I can answer any questions you may have.
I have none.
No?
Nope. Next item.
Mr. Vice Chair, if you could, see if anybody would like to speak in for or against.
Okay, sorry. Do that later. Anyone in the public who would like to speak for or against this, please, come forward and just state your name. Okay, number one.
Good evening. Mr. Vice Chair, if I may, can I present items two and three together as they are related to the same project?
Certainly.
So, item two is a second reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning map for property at two oh nine Vilfutch Road. BG's Collision Center is requesting to rezonate a three-point-two acre tract from the B one to the B two general commercial from the B one commercial. The applicant plans to continue its use as a heavy automotive repair, as well as establishing an accessory car rental service to the car repair shop. At the planning and zoning meeting, they did recommend approval on the condition that the applicant constructs six additional parking spaces prior to the car rental service being established, and that is in conformance with our parking requirements in the UDO. So, to get everyone organized, this is on the north end of the county, close to the intersection of Vilfutch and Wilma Edwards. And you can see the current zoning map here, as well as the comprehensive area showing that it does meet the comprehensive plan in the emerging suburban character area. And then we have the site layout as it is present. He's not planning to construct any additional structures, as the accessory car rental use will be inside of there, just taking up one desk. And then, moving on to item three, this is the conditional use required for the heavy automotive repair. Planning and zoning also recommended approval, subject to continued compliance with the supplemental use regulations governing heavy auto repair asset fourth in section one fourteen dash seven twenty-two of the Bryan County Unified Development Ordinance. And this is the site again, and this shows you the supplemental ordinance regulations. Staff did go out on a visit to the site, just to make sure that he was in compliance with all of these, which the applicant was, other than the raised curb, but this raised curb requirement was not a requirement when he constructed the facility. And here are some pictures of the site. And I can answer any questions you may have.
No questions?
Thank you.
Anyone here wish to speak for or against item three, two and three? No one, let's move forward to four.
So, item four is a sketch plat approval for parcel thirty located in the Waterways Plan Development. This plat will propose a hundred and four single-family lots and a hundred and two townhome lots. At the November meeting, Planning and Zoning recommended approval of this plat for parcel thirty with the condition a water and sewer agreement is entered into with the Board of Commissioners prior to sketch plat approval. We do have that water and sewer agreement on the agenda tonight, but it is after this item, so I believe Aaron is just gonna talk about modifying that condition slightly.
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Vice Chair, a member of the board, the water and sewer agreement for parcel thirty is on the agenda. It's a county administrator item, and we do have the signature page from Savannah Land Holdings properly executed and the original. So, my proposal or recommendation would be that it's conditioned upon the approval of this water and sewer agreement.
Very good. Any comments from the Commissioners?
No.
Any comments from the public for or against item number four? Okay, moving on to item number five.
I got one question. Do you know what a motion would be like that would be in keeping with your recommendation?
Yes, sir. My recommendation would be a motion to approve the sketch plat conditioned upon the execution and approval of a water and sewer agreement.
Okay, item five.
So, this item is the second reading of a rezoning. The property is located on Olive Branch Road. It's currently zoned RR one point five, and they are requesting, or apologize, RR two point five, and they're requesting RR one point five. The property is approximately four point four or five acres and currently has a home on it, and they're requesting to rezone in order to subdivide, as you see Harris proposed, in order to build a home for a family member. Staff found that this would have a minimal impact on the surrounding area and is consistent with the emerging suburban future land use. So, Planning and Zoning did recommend approval of the rezoning at their meeting, and I can answer any questions you have.
Okay.
I'm good.
Anyone in the public wish to speak for or against item five? Okay, very good. Moving on to item six.
Item number six is a request to amend zoning conditions for the lakes at Black Creek. Black Creek Community, Black Creek Development Company is requesting to modify a condition placed by the Board of Commissioners on March the eighth, two thousand and eleven, in order to remove a requirement related to constructing a berm and allow existing vegetation to remain with supplemented ilieagnis silver berry plantings. Planning and zoning did recommend approval of the zoning condition change, subject to the following conditions: One, that the applicant or developer be responsible for submitting site civil drawings with drainage calculations to the engineering department for review, and for constructing all necessary drainage improvements. All drainage improvements must be completed and inspected by the county engineer prior to any building permits being issued for lots one fifty-seven to one sixty-six. And second, the applicant developer shall be responsible for submitting a final site buffer landscape plan to the community development department for review, install all plantings, and enter into a landscape maintenance agreement for two years prior to any building permits being issued for lots one fifty-seven to one sixty-six. So, this is on the lakes of Black Creek for lots one fifty-seven to one sixty-six off of Vilfutch Road. The condition originally came about during the original rezoning case in two thousand and six, which was to build a twelve-foot-high berm in the thirty-foot area. This was modified during the sketch plat process in two thousand and six to be just a six-foot-high berm, and that's the condition that they're wishing to remove now. They're requesting the condition that it be a certificate of occupancy hold until such time that the drainage wells are proposed, and I just wanted to remind the board that the staff recommendation is that it's prior to any building permits being issued. And this shows you what the original berm concept looked like, and this shows you their proposed buffer concept plan to leave the existing trees with the ilieagnis plantings to be supplemented. And then, this shows you the existing conditions. The bottom picture is from the inside of Bacon Court in Abigail Circle, and the top picture is what it would look like from the field on the outside of the subdivision. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, Commissioners?
I'm good.
Okay, anyone in the public wish to speak for or against item number six? Okay, we'll move on to item number seven.
Item number seven is a major amendment to a subdivision, Heritage Acres Phase C, Lot C thirteen. Robert Bell is requesting a minor, a minor amendment to subdivide a single-family lot into two different lots. Since the UDO recognizes this as a major subdivision, to subdivide the lot, it does require Board of Commission approval, and Planning and Zoning did recommend approval, subject to the condition that the property owner file an application with the Public Health Department for final review for an individual septic system, and that public health approval need to be, will need to be obtained prior to recording of the final plat. So, this is on Mac English Road and is zoned RR one rural residential, and is currently about two point eight acres, and he's looking to subdivide both of them into one point four each. And here, you can see the original plat from the nineteen eighties and what he's looking to subdivide it into now. And I can answer any questions you may have about this one.
I'm good.
Any questions, Commissioners? Anyone in the public wish to speak for or against item number seven? Okay, we'll move on to number eight.
Item number eight is the second reading of an ordinance to amend the Bryan County sign ordinance. So, these ordinance amendments focus on regulating signage along interstate highways and within commercial and industrial zoning districts. The proposed changes introduce new provisions for digital gas price displays for use within the commercial zoning districts at gas stations, and then also modifies existing provisions for outdoor advertising signs for billboards, and also for interstate pole signs. We did present this to the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting on November nineteenth, and they did recommend approval of the amendments as presented by staff, and staff is recommending that you approve this ordinance this evening. With that, I can answer any questions you might have.
No questions, Commissioners? Anyone in the public wish to speak for or against this item number eight? Okay, we'll move on to item number nine.
Evening Commissioners. This is second reading for an ordinance revision to the UDO. This would add a new section to the UDO to address instances where the county has been sued based on a decision on a rezoning variance application, conditional use permit as it stands now. Generally, someone could refile the next day and still pursue their litigation. We've decided, we're recommending that that not be allowed, that if the issue is subject to litigation, that there be no, no applications allowed to be submitted on that particular property or issue until the litigation is resolved. This would help prevent any sort of conflict between what maybe the Planning and Zoning Board is doing and what the Board of Commissioners is pursuing. So, the PNC recommended approval, and staff is asking, recommending approval as well.
Any questions, Commissioners?
No.
Anyone in the public wish to speak for or against item number six? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing and go back now and vote on each one of these items individually. First item.
Mr. Vice Chairman, do you want me to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Sorry.
I make a motion to close the public hearing and reenter our regular meeting.
One second.
Excellent. Okay, now, we'll go back and vote on each one of them individually.
One more thing, Mr. Chair. As I voted on all these nine items, as a member of the Planning and Zoning Board in December, I'll be recusing from each of these items this going.
Yes, sir. Very good. Okay.
Do we need to vote on that motion?
We do need to vote on that motion.
Home.
On the motion to
Close.
Close the public hearing and enter the regular meeting.
Sorry.
Okay. Now, all in favor of closing the public hearing and moving back into voting on each item individually?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, we'll try this again. Third time's the charm, right? Okay, first item. Coleman Company, conditional use permit to operate a borrow pit on seventy-one point sixty-two acres, parcel number zero six three dash zero zero one.
All right, Mr. Vice Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit for parcel number zero six three dash zero zero one with the following two pages of conditions. Bear with me.
Commissioner, you can just make a motion to approve it with the conditions as presented in the staff report.
Okay. That would, that would be great.
I want him to read all of them. I got him some water here.
Yes, condition, condition number one through condition number seven, which is the final condition, as presented in the staff report.
No, second, Beth.
Excellent. All in favor of item passing item number one? Any, all opposed, in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item passes. Now, two and three, should we vote on them together? Vote on them individually, okay?
They should be.
Okay. Item number two, BG's Repair and Refinishing LLC, second reading of the ordinance to amend the zoning map for three point two-two acres, parcel number zero two five dash zero zero one dash zero one. Have a motion from anyone?
Mr. Chairman, I'm making motion to approve the rezoning of parcel zero two five dash zero zero one dash zero one from B one Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District to B two General Commercial Zoning District with the following conditions: The applicant shall construct six additional parking spaces prior to the car rental service being established.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion passes. Item number three, BG's Repair and Refinishing LLC, conditional use permit to operate a heavy automotive repair facility on three point two-two acres, parcel number zero two five dash zero zero one dash zero one.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move to approve a conditional use permit to operate a heavy automobile repair facility for parcel zero two five dash zero zero one dash zero one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item passes. Number, item number four, Savannah Land Holdings LLC, sketch plat for two hundred and six lot subdivision located in the Waterways Township subdivision for plus or minus forty-seven, forty-seven point seventy-three acres, parcel zero seven five dash zero zero one. I have a motion.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I move to approve the sketch plat for parcel thirty, under the condition that a water and sewer agreement be executed and approved and entered into with the Board of Commissioners prior to the final sketch plat approval.
No second.
Is that, is that a little wordy?
Yeah, can we, I would recommend a little bit more narrow, Commissioner Kizga. Can we just do a motion to approve the sketch plat conditioned upon the execution and approval of the water and sewer?
Okay.
Do I withdraw that motion then?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Vice Chairman, I move to approve the sketch plat for parcel thirty, under the condition of the execution and approval of a water and sewer agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion passes. Item number five, James S. Leach, second reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning map for plus or minus four point four-five acres, parcel, parcel zero two nine one dash zero four five dash zero one.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move to approve the rezoning of parcel zero two nine one dash zero four five dash zero one from RR two five Rural Residential Zoning District to the RR one point five Rural Residential Zoning District.
Second.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number six, Coleman Company, Scott Allison Representing Century Communities Amendment to Zoning Conditions Buffer Standards for Lakes at Black Creek Subdivision, parcels zero one nine E dash one five seven dash zero one nine E dash one six six. We need a motion.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move to approve the zoning condition changes related to the lakes of Black Creek, subject to the following conditions. The applicant developer shall be responsible for submitting site civil drawings with drainage calculations to the engineering department for review, and for constructing, constructing all necessary drainage improvements. All drainage improvements must be completed and inspected by the county engineer prior to any building permits being issued for lots one five seven through one six six. The applicant developer shall be responsible for submitting a final buffer landscape plan to the community development department for review, installing all required plantings, and entering into a landscape maintenance agreement and two-year maintenance prior to any building permits being issued for lots one five seven through one six six.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item passes. Item number seven, James Anderson Representing Robert Bell Jr. Investments Incorporated, sketch plat for plus or minus two point seven four acres, that's parcel number zero two seven one dash zero five nine. We need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the subdivision plat for parcel zero two seven one dash zero five nine with the following condition: The property owner must file an application with the county's Public Health Department for final review. An approval of the use of individual septic systems, public health approval will need to be obtained prior to the recording of the final plat.
Okay. We need a second. We need a second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes. Number eight, second reading of an ordinance to amend the Bryan County siding ordinance.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I approve, uh, I move to approve the amendment of the Bryan County siding ordinance as presented.
We need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes. Number nine, second reading of an ordinance to amend Unified Development Ordinance one-one-four dash two-two-one.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Vice Chairman, I move to approve the amendment to the Bryan County Unified Development Ordinance with the addition of section one-one-four dash two-two-one as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. That concludes the public hearings. Now, we're gonna go to Community Development Non-Public Hearings.
Non-public hearing item number one is a first reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning map for property located on IG Linear Road identified by parcel number zero-one-four-zero-one-one-zero-six. Mr. Polk is requesting to rezone approximately five acres from the A-five Agricultural Zoning District to the RR one-point-five zoning district. Again, this is a first reading, so no official action will be taken tonight. This will go to its first public hearing with planning and zoning next week on January twenty-first, and we'll be back for a second hearing and final decision before you all in February. And I have the location map here and the zoning map, if y'all have any questions for me.
I'm good.
Any questions? Okay. Move on to the next topic.
The second item is also a first reading for rezoning for parcel oh-five-six oh-one-four, which you'll see highlighted there. Jake Reynolds is requesting to rezone approximately one-point-four acres located on Dunham Marsh Trail from its existing PD zoning to RR one in order to construct a home. And you can see the surrounding zoning there. Again, this is just a first reading. It'll be before planning and zoning January twenty-first and back with you all on February eleventh. And I can answer any questions you have on that one.
None, thank you.
Okay, that concludes the Community Development Non-Public Hearing. We're gonna go now to Mr. Taylor, the County Administrator, for his items.
Good afternoon. I'd first like to recognize, uh, his first day of work was yesterday, Chief Matthew Bar- or Burns. And he comes to us with thirty-three years of experience, and he is the new chief of Bryan County Emergency Services and Fire. So, we're proud to have him.
Welcome, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Item number two, as we already done item one, is the appointment of the county attorney. In January of each year, the Board of Commissioners appoints the county attorney, Aaron Kapler, with Thompson O'Brien Kapler, and Tassu has been serving as the county attorney since January of twenty-twenty-three. Recommendations, Bryan County Board of Commissioners considers a reappointment of Mr. Kapler as the county attorney for two thousand twenty-five.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I move to appoint Aaron Kapler as the county attorney for FY two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You made it.
Yeah, good work. You did a great job last year. Thank you.
Item three is a consideration of GDOT updated road list. Over the past year, Bryan County Public Works has been working with Sheriff's Department and GIS to update a list of speed limits for paved roads in Bryan County. Of course, this has to be submitted to GDOT. This list will include all paved roads that have been accepted in Bryan County and have a speed limit of twenty-five miles an hour or greater. So this will be a part one of a part two that's coming in the next couple of months. Our recommendation is to approve the updated list of speed limits for county paved roads and authorize staff to submit the approved list to the Georgia Department of Transportation for purposes of updating their, their road list as well.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the updated list of speed limits for county paved roads and authorize staff to submit the approved list to the Georgia Department of Transportation for purposes of updating the state ordinance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes.
Item four is consideration of appointments to the Bryan County Board of Elections and Registration. The terms of three members of this board expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Those seats are were current, were held by Keith Spitznagle, Nevin Patton, and Elizabeth Urkel. Appointments to these seats would immediately begin a four-year term and expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight, or until their successors are duly appointed and qualified. Our recommendation from the applications is the consideration of the appointment from Lynetta Smith, Noah Covington, and reappointment of Keith Spitznagle with terms expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight in accordance with the local legislation that established that.
We need a motion.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I move to appoint Ms. Lynetta Smith, Mr. Noah Covington, and reappoint Mr. Keith Spitznagle with terms expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight in accordance with the local legislation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Motion passes.
Item five is a consideration of Savannah Land Holdings Water and Sewer Agreement. Savannah Land Holdings is developing a two-hundred-and-six lot residential subdivision in the community of Waterways. Due to the current limited wastewater capacity, county's infrastructure expansion schedule, Savannah Land Holdings is required to enter into a water and sewer service agreement prior, prior to the sketch plat being approved to address the terms and conditions of obtaining water and sewer service from Bryan County, including but not limited due to the cost per ERU and the phasing of the development. Our recommendation is to approve the water and sewer service agreement with Savannah Land Holdings LLC.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I move to approve the water and service agreement with Savannah Land Holdings LLC as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item, Mr. Taylor.
Item six is a, is another annual bookkeeping item. This is the consideration of the adoption of a road classification plan that is due each year. The road classification plan is a part of the Unified Development Ordinance and identifies all roads in Bryan County as arterial, collector, local, unpaved, or private. The engineering director is tasked with maintaining the county roads inventory, and the engineering director updates the road inventory throughout the year, identifying right-of-way dedications and abandonments, change in ownership of any roads and private roads that are constructed. At the end of the calendar year, the engineer, engineer updates the road classification plan with the road inventory information, and the engineering director has reviewed the two thousand twenty-five road classification plan and determined that this plan accurately reflects Bryan County's road inventory as of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. So our recommendation is to approve a resolution adopting the two thousand twenty-five road classification plan.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I move to approve a resolution adopting the two thousand twenty-five road classification plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item seven is a consideration of appointment to Planning and Zoning Commission, and of course, they serve the purpose of Board of Adjustments as well. Joe Pacinko's term ends February twenty-eighth. He is not seeking, seeking to be reappointed. Dustin Sims has expressed an interest in that position and seek an appointment to the P and Z Board and the Board of Adjustment. If appointed, his term would be, would expire February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-nine.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I make a motion to appoint Dustin Sims to the Bryan County Planning and Zoning Commission and Board of Adjustment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number eight.
Item number eight pertains to a future CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Program that we'll be submitting an application for. It's the consideration of selection for administrator, engineer, and the architect for this project. This project has not been approved yet. The request proposals was published in the Georgia Procurement Registry on the county's website and direct solicitation was sent to ten firms in accordance with DCA that provide these services. Administration responses were received from Carter and Slope and Gilbert and Associates. The selection committee for, for this, for this project recommends Carter and Slope Engineering as the project administrator, also for the engineering, T.R. Long, and for the project architect, McCall Architecture.
Mr. Chairman, I move to award CDBG Application Services, Engineering Services, and Architecture Services to Carter and Slope as project administrator, T.R. Long Engineering as project engineer, and McCall Architecture as project architect.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number nine, Mr. Taylor.
Item nine is a consideration of a resolution to approve an IGA, intergovernmental agreement between Bryan County and the City of Richmond Hill for Belfast Keller Road improvements in accordance of the best interest of the citizens of Bryan County. The county's entered into an IGA with the City of Richmond Hill regarding the joint funding, design, and construction of this transportation project on Belfast Keller Road. Under the IGA, this county and city would agree to share the cost of transportation improvements to Belfast Keller that were not funded by private developers. Our recommendation is that you consider this agreement to be approved.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement between Bryan County and the City of Richmond Hill for the Belfast Keller Road improvements.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number ten, Mr. Taylor.
Item ten is the, relates to item nine, of course. This is the Belfast Keller Road Improvement Project for the I- ninety-five interchange to Cranston Bluff Road Incorporated from Radiant Places. And the City of Richmond Hill, Bryan County, is committed to construction road improvements to Belfast, to Belfast Keller Corridor in accordance with its approved access management plan that was approved a few years back. Improvements consist of roadway widening along Belfast Keller Road from east of the interchange ramp to Cranston Bluff Road. Roundabout is being constructed now. The widening includes improving the existing two-lane section to a six-lane divided section from the ramp to Great O'Geechey Parkway and a four-lane divided section from Great O'Geechey Parkway to Cranston Bluff Roundabout. In addition, there will be a new roundabout construction at the Hartwood Avenue intersection, and the project is being jointly funded by Bryan County, Richmond Hill, and Radiant Places. The project was advertised, of course, and bids were received October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. They've been reviewed and a recommendation has been made, and the recommendation from the design engineer is to award the Belfast Keller Road Improvements Project, I- ninety-five Interchange, Cranston Bluff Road, to platinum paving and concrete amount of sixteen million one hundred and one thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars and authorize staff to execute the necessary contract documents in order to initiate a project.
Mr. Taylor, just for my clarification, this is a multi-stage project. We're obligating and awarding it, but our financial obligation for this sixteen million dollars is whereabouts one.
So this is phase two of a, basically a, the first two phases. Phase one consisted of the entrance of the new high school along Belfast Keller Roundabout there up to Cranston Bluff with some, with some, some road improvements there as well with some widening. So that was phase one. That was about sixteen million dollars all in. The county paid for that portion of the road. The previous item nine, the IGA states that the majority of this money, so about fifteen million or so, will be paid by the City of Richmond Hill for phase two, so.
Okay, so although the total number is sixteen-one, we're the, we're facilitating the, the contract being done, but our obligation for this is, our, our portion of that, that's not, less than fifteen million dollars.
Yeah, it's pretty much met. We're just, we're just facilitating the project and overseeing the project to make sure it gets executed.
Understood. All right, thank you.
Very good. Okay, we need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to award Belfast Keller Interchange Project to Platinum Paving and Concrete LLC at the amount of sixteen million one hundred and one thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars and authorize staff to execute the necessary contract documents in order to initiate the project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number eleven.
Item number eleven is a consideration of a resolution for House Bill five-eight-one. House Bill five-eight-one provides for floating homestead exemption that limits annual increases in assessed value for residential properties to the inflationary rate as determined by the State Revenue Commissioner. House Bill five-eight-one allows counties, municipalities, and school boards to opt out of the floating homestead exemption, or you may remain in. The floating homestead exemption provides relief and benefits to the citizens of Bryan County accordingly in the best interest of the citizens of the county and to ensure that citizens enjoy the relief and benefits provided by House Bill five-eight-one. The Board of Commissioners has determined that Bryan County will adopt the House Bill five-eight-one floating homestead exemption and will elect not to opt out. I repeat, not to opt out and remain in to gain the benefit of that law. The Bryan County Board of Commissioners encourages, of course, the municipalities located within Bryan County to also adopt the benefits of House Bill five-eight-one and not opt out as well. So attached, you will see in your packet a resolution which go, which goes ahead and states your intentions of, of not opting out.
Any comments? I would like to also add, this, this pass was sixty-six percent of the vote. So, in today's environment, a landslide is fifty, winning fifty, fifty-one percent. Sixty percent of the vote is more than a landslide. That's a, that's a mandate. That's, that's what the public wants. That being said, entertain a motion to support this resolution.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I make a motion to approve a resolution establishing the decision of Bryan County to not opt out of House Bill five-eight-one homestead exemption, and I salute the City of Pembroke for doing the same at their meeting last night.
One second then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That concludes the portion of the meeting. The County Administrator, um, we have some county attorney items.
Good to see you.
Proceed. Thank you.
So, this, this item is consideration of a resolution to authorize acquisition of fee simple right-of-way and easement interests from tax parcel zero-two-five-one zero-one-seven zero-one, and this is parcel four of the Bryan County Wilma Edwards Church of God Highway two-eighty roundabout project. The owner of the parcel is Bryland Holdings, Inc. This item authorizes Bryan County to acquire from Bryland Holdings, Inc., certain right-of-way rights from the property lying in Bryan County, Georgia, tax parcel ID number zero-two-five-one dash zero-one-seven dash zero-one. The county shall pay seventy-three thousand four hundred and eighty dollars in exchange for the right-of-way and easement rights upon the property. This right-of-way deed grants the county fee simple right-of-way and easement rights to the property, which is located at five-two-eight-nine Wilma Edwards Road.
Any discussion, Commissioners?
I'll be glad when this is done.
Amen to that. Entertain a motion?
Mr. Vice Chairman, I make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the acquisition of certain rights-of-ways of parcel zero-two-five-one dash zero-one-seven dash zero-one for the Wilma Edwards Church of God Road, US Highway two-eighty round- Highway 280 Roundabout Project, and approve compensation in an amount of $73,480 in exchange for the right-of-way and easement rights to the property.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right. The next one is consideration of a resolution to accept dedication of right-of-way and easement interest from tax parcel 0251-052, and that's parcel seven of the Bryan County Wilma Edwards Church of God Highway 280 Roundabout Project. The owner of that parcel is the Bryan County Board of Education. This item authorizes the county to accept from Bryan County Board of Education a right-of-way deed for certain right-of-way rights upon the property lying in Bryan County, Georgia, tax parcel ID number 0251-052. The board shall dedicate the right-of-way and easement rights in the property to the county at no cost. The county and board shall enter into an agreement whereby the county shall agree to reimburse the board for reasonable costs associated with moving certain improvements of the board located within the extent of the dedicated right-of-way. This property is located at East Highway 280, Bryan County, Georgia.
Very good. Any discussion? Entertain a motion?
Mr. Vice Chair, I move to approve a resolution authorizing the acquisition of certain rights-of-ways of parcel 0251-052 for the Wilma Edwards Church of God Road, U.S. Highway 280 Roundabout Project, and approve reimbursement to the Board of Education related to any infrastructure relocation located within said right-of-way.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll go to item three now. Thank you, Gage. You did great. Aaron, you gotta straighten up.
I know, I'll tell you. Mr. Vice Chair, this is item number three. This is coming before the board on a request to approve a resolution to condemn certain property interest in tax parcel 023-005, which is in Bullock County, Georgia. The property owners are Clara Baird and Richard E. Olive. The county staff, the county attorney, my office have been negotiating with those property owners for quite some time. We have yet to reach an agreement, and it does not appear that we are going to reach an agreement, and we need these easement rights obtained in the fee simple parcel as well. We obtained a fair market value appraisal from a third-party appraiser who's licensed in the state of Georgia to provide such valuations, and that valuation was $70,700. So our recommendation is to approve the declaration of taking order and resolution to condemn property and authorize my office to initiate and maintain those condemnation proceedings. I can answer any questions that you might have.
Hello. May I speak, please? I'm Miss Baird.
Okay.
Ordinarily, it'd be up to the vice chair whether or not you can speak on at this time or not.
Certainly.
Okay. Well, we do, and we give y'all early access. I have had the power to land appraisal from the state, and to my knowledge, I don't know if there's been any litigations with y'all or not. And I'm gonna sit down. And I do have an attorney.
I believe if we do the condemnation, we still have 30 days to reach an agreement. So we have 30 days after this to get together.
Yeah, and to clarify, members of the board, and for Miss Baird's sake as well, there is no current pending litigation. So we have been negotiating with the property owner's attorney for months to try to reach a resolution. The way this process will work if this board were to approve the resolution is the first thing we do is we obtain the money, the $70,700 that our appraiser has determined to be the value of the property. We then pay that money into the court, and the court holds the money in trust for the property owner to make a claim to. If the property owner is unsatisfied with the valuation that we have obtained, the property owner has a right to contest that with the court and make a claim towards that money and show up a different valuation. So if that property owner believes they have an appraisal that's higher than that number, they can certainly present that evidence to the court and to us to negotiate. And as always, we're continued to be open to negotiating a resolution short of a final condemnation and a trial, but we do need that information from the property owner in order to do that.
Very good.
Please don't think I'm bad, but I thought this is the most legal dealing I have ever had. I am scared of that.
Nothing to be afraid of, ma'am, and you understand, I can't talk to you directly because you have an attorney.
And I can't talk to you directly.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm talking to the lady.
Yes, ma'am. So it's not an adversarial situation, right? It's obtaining the property rights that we need, and we'll continue to work with her attorney to try to reach an amicable resolution.
Excellent.
And we have the right to condemn property in Bullock County?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay.
In theory, the $70,700 could change. Is there a percentage it could change?
Yeah. This is what I think.
Certainly, Commissioner. So anything's up to negotiation, right? So theoretically, if an appraisal comes back and it's $75,000, and that's a reasonable negotiation, we would evaluate that appraisal. We would have our appraiser look at it to make sure nothing was missed or nothing was inaccurate, and then we would come back to this board for further discussion on that. Nothing is foreclosed until the very end, and we're a long way away from the very end.
Even that process fails, we still have the process.
Correct.
But this is basically a way to maybe move the ball a little bit further down the court.
This process is a way for us to obtain legal title to the property that we need, and it does not prevent further negotiations on the value. It does not prevent further negotiations on appraisals. It doesn't prevent any of that. It just allows us to obtain legal ownership of the property interests that we need for this project.
Very good. Under what scenario does it come back before this body? Or is this it?
It would come back before this body on any settlement negotiations that need to be approved.
Outside of the $70,700?
Correct.
If it's a dollar difference, it comes back?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I can't settle anything without y'all's approval. Mr. Taylor, what's the timeline on this project?
This is something that's, yeah, it'd be done very, very quick.
Any more questions? Any more comments? Ma'am, are you good back there? You kind of understand where we're at?
Right.
I didn't hear what you said.
She said she'll be all right.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Can I make a motion?
Mr. Vice Chair, in your role as a vice chair, you cannot.
Okay.
You can vote on a motion, but you cannot make the motion.
Why is time of the essence?
Well, we're basically, the contractor's on the ground now. So, yeah, it's, any way to delay.
This is one step to kind of push to get negotiations going further?
That's correct. We have been working with this for months, literally going back to the fall of 2024. As a matter of fact, I think our appraisal was over the summer in terms of evaluation. So this goes back four, five, six months that we have been negotiating. The issue has been that although her attorney indicates there's a valuation and that they've hired an appraiser, as she says she has, we don't have the report, and we have been asking for the report for months. And we can't negotiate against ourselves. We can't just come up with valuations. We need an evidentiary basis to consider the valuation, and that's why you hire appraisers. That's what we did. I understand they've hired one or they're working on one, but until we get it, there's nothing for us to negotiate in terms of that valuation.
Sir?
Can she speak again?
I have the appraisal right here in my hand, and I know I can't give it to you. It has been sent through my attorney, and he was supposed to be doing something with it. We were under impressions that y'all were in allegations, and I missed hush the board with it.
Okay. Okay.
So we need a motion?
We need a motion, or else it dies for lack of a motion.
This thing is dated September the 6th, 2004. No, excuse me, excuse me, 2024.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move to approve the declaration of taking order and resolution to condemn property to authorize the county attorney to initiate and maintain condemnation proceedings to acquire the property necessary for the purposes of facilitating the Highway 80 Regional Force Main Improvement Project.
We have a motion. We need a second.
I'll second it.
Any more conversation? Okay, vote?
We don't take this lightly, really and truly.
Not either.
Yes, ma'am.
Vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Three to one. The motion passes. Okay. We are to the public comments portion of our meeting. Lori, if you'll check and see if we had anyone sign up to speak. I would like to say, since this is the first official meeting for our two new commissioners, they were at the pre-agenda meeting, thank y'all for agreeing to serve. You'll get your Commissioner decoder ring, and you'll learn, yeah, you'll learn the secret handshake also. Okay. We have three folks who signed up. The first one is Ms. Melissa Johnson. If you'd like to come forward, Ms. Johnson, you have five minutes. Tell us what's on your mind.
Hi, thank you for hearing me tonight. I'm Melissa Johnson. I am a resident in Richmond Hill, Bryan County. I have had a lot of issues with the Public Works Department. Back in October of 2023, I contacted Bryan County and asked to remove several pine trees and brush that were on my property that were just overgrown at risk of falling on my house, my fence, and the county said, no problem, go ahead, which I did. And after we cleared out the brush, there's a drainage ditch that goes along one side of my property, and in January and February of 2024, I made multiple calls to the county. I've even emailed Mr. Montanay a few times, and nothing was done. And I had the county on speed dial, kept calling, please help fix the drainage, there's too much water there. Finally, the county came out on March 2024, and I have an email from Mr. Montanay acknowledging that, yes, there's water, it needs to be fixed, and they wanted to wait until I had put sod down on my property, which I did within a week of this email, and I had told them that the sod was coming, and it went down. And they had opened up at the time a work order to fix the drainage ditch. Well, over the summer with our hurricanes, I opted not to call and bother the county because I'm sure you guys had bigger problems at hand. But in December, I again emailed the county asking for an update on my work order. My emails unanswered, and not only did I email Mr. Montanay, Mr. Ben Taylor was on the email, Ms. Catherine Downs, and Taylor Morrison were all on these emails, and I'm very disappointed that, you know, what determines your success as leadership here is the chain of command that's designed, and Mr. Taylor couldn't be bothered with returning phone calls to his office, responding back to my email. Mr. Montanay has not done an adequate job of addressing this issue that went on for a year, and it's just not acceptable, right? I mean, I will happily RSVP to future board meetings, but I don't want to have to drive an hour here to get somebody to do their job. And the only reason why they came and weed-whacked the area was because I threatened to show up at this board meeting, and I shouldn't have to do that to get action done. It's just not acceptable. And they did not level out, so the water is still piling up. I have pictures if needed, and it's a safety issue. It's not good for the community, it's not good for the kids that play in the area, and it's a mosquito breeding haven. We just don't need that. I pay tax dollars, and I want, you know, folks in the Public Works Department to help the community when we call. I shouldn't have to call, you know, 20, 30 times to get people to do their job. So I appreciate the time that you've taken to hear me out, and, you know, I will RSVP as pending to future board meetings, but I really want this issue resolved.
Welcome to come to any board meeting that you like.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming to this one, and I think we are very understanding of your frustrations, and I think many of those people typically don't exhibit, you know, that type of result from what I've seen. So I'll dig into what the circumstances may have been, and we'll get a good resolution for you.
I appreciate that.
Could you please give us the address?
Sure. 63 Sweetwater Court.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, next up, we have Ms. Ella Moore. If you would, just state your name and your address, please. I'm sorry, I forgot to ask Ms. Johnson to do that.
Ella Moore, 32 Clara Street, Pembroke, Georgia, 31321.
Thank you.
Um, Gina, to the councilman, I am here for two concerns. The first concern I have is, and I don't know if you can answer this right off the bat, but who's responsible for the dog laws in Bryan County?
Community development? Is that right?
We have an animal control department.
Puts the laws in place?
Yeah. So animal control, so that don't come from the county?
No, that's a department in the county, animal control is.
Okay, I was told that county commissioner has. Do y'all vote on those laws? In other words, whatever regulations is put in place?
They were voted on at one time. We have a whole set of ordinances concerning a multitude of topics, animal control certainly being one of them.
Okay, but y'all do hire animal control?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
They're county employees.
Yes. And I guess my concern would be, I have reported several times about dogs roaming my area. Got to the point, about a couple of months ago, I had someone looking at some things on my property, and my neighbor's dog comes and run on my property, and it takes them minutes to get there. There's an article that came out on December the 20th, and it says, "The Ridden of the Mother Said, 'It Can't Be True.'" Mom of Deadly Dog Attack Victim Speaks Out. And it say, "We spoke to Roger's mom," Roger's just a young lady, "over the phone. You can hear her voice, the pain she's going through right now. I would be the first one to tell you I'm afraid of dogs. Whenever I ask someone to come out, most times when I ask somebody to come to my house, I call animal control, the lady always tell me she busy. I get there when I can. I understand that, I know you busy, but I don't understand why we are giving these people the rights to say, okay, we understand that you have a problem with the dogs, but we gonna get them three strikes before we do anything to them. Now, if that dog would have attacked me, what in the world would the county responsibility would have been, because I have called and called and called? And if we don't hold them accountable, what is their purpose? And I don't care for the dogs. I don't have no problem with people who have dogs, but I don't want them in my yard. I have voiced this to animal control. They tell me I have to lock my fence in order to keep the dogs out, and I don't think I should have to do that." So I'm asking that, I'm like, if three strikes ain't out, I think it's one strike. We don't know when that dog gonna attack, and if they attack a child, it'll be on our hands that we allow people to get three strikes before they do something about these dogs that's roaming.
We'll make sure to get with animal control immediately and have them follow up on your complaints.
Ms. Ella, the dogs you have problem with, it's the same dog every time, and it's a neighbor's dog? You know whose dog it is?
Yes, we know whose dog it is.
It's not a stray dog?
Yes, sir. And my concern is, when they come in my yard... And my concern is, when they come in my yard, yard, they do their business, and then nobody know who dog. I don't want the dogs in my yard, period. And I don't think they should just keep giving these people chances and chances and chances to keep their dogs under control. I have no problem with the dogs, and they yard, but when it come on my property, I do. And the last thing I want to just ask, and I know I talked with Mr. Matt earlier, is who do, this is concerning the Mill Creek Church Road project. I want a person who is directly, we as people on Mill Creek Church Road, who do we go to directly for answers, for who's doing the job and who we can talk to, because I don't want to get 10 people involved and can't get answered. So, we want to narrow it down to the person who we need to go directly to to get answers.
That would be Public Works.
That would be Matt.
All right, Mr. Matt. Yes, sir. Appreciate you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Next up, we have Ms. Juanita Baker. If you'll come down, get your name and your address, we'll be glad to let you. Tell us what you got on your mind.
Juanita Baker at 245 Groove Hill Road. The reason I'm here actually is to thank the county commissioners, all of you, for approving the grant for Groove Hill Community. I also would like to thank Eric Van Otteren, who has worked with us diligently to get this project going forward, because the community really needs it, and we appreciate it, all the hard work that he has put into it. It's going to be a long-term type thing. I know it's not going to be short done, but at least we have some, we have the issues that are really, really, really needing to be looked into with the Hyundai plant being there and all of the things that are occurring right around our community. I mean, it's almost like getting in and out of our community has just been a nightmare, but I know the roundabouts is in the process right now. The one that you already have up that's closer to I-16 is really helping, but the other one, I'm encouraged a little bit. I don't know if anyone has the answer to that. Do you have a general idea? Does, who do I find out as far as how that's coming along? Because I think it would help when we're trying to come into our community. Getting in and out of it at 5:30, it takes you forever, and I just don't know what the status, you know, what's the status of that?
The most of that is the GDOT project, and we coordinate very closely with them. We've got the Wilma Edwards Roundabout right up the road. I can get with you and Lynn and county attorney and crook, Ross can give you an update on that, when that's what he finishes. That's fast track that GDOT, that's a long way, as you can see, because you live right there.
Yeah.
They give it to us for when it's going to go in operation.
Okay, well, again, thank you very much for approving that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Thank you for the kind words. All right. Executive session? Any comments from the commissioners? If not, we need a motion to go into the executive session to discuss real estate and litigation. Thank you all for coming.
That we enter executive session for the purposes of discussing litigation.
Need a second? Very good.
And real estate?
Yeah. Ain't it real estate? Real estate and litigation?
Did we vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?